Let's call to order the July 5th, 2016 Regular City Council Meeting. And could we have the invocation by Tom Gilgor, Gil-Gil-Gor, Kil-Gor of First Southern Baptist Church?
Thank you for the opportunity to pray with you. Let's pray together.
Heavenly Father, I thank you on this day for the freedom that we have in our nation. The freedom to be able to come together, the freedom to have a citizen-led government, the freedom to worship, the freedom for tolerance in this country. God, I thank you for all of that. And I know, Father, that this freedom was carved out in letter and in blood by our forefathers and mothers. So again, I pray for our city, our officials, our workers, our first responders, and for our involved citizens. God bless this city, bless their work. For, Father, we have a duty to make this place a better place. We have a duty to make this city better for our kids. We have a duty to feed and house those less fortunate. And we have a duty and a responsibility to make this city a place of prosperity. So God give wisdom to our leaders, energize our workers, fill them all, all of us, with compassion and commitment to see the task through. And this can only happen through divine wisdom and guidance. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you all. Could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Council members Smith here, Schumacher here, Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Council members Ekstrom and Shiraki, you are both excused. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I then call for approval of the minutes for the June 20th City Council Meeting and the June 29th Public Works Committee Meeting. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, could I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Smith.
I move that we approve the minutes from the 6/20/2016 Regular City Council Meeting and the 6/29/2016 Public Works Committee Meeting.
Mr. Weed, second. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Weed.
Aye.
Council member Meisner.
Aye.
Council member Gill.
Aye.
Council member Schumacher.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any City Council members that would have announcements at this time? Mr. Weed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to announce there is a General Government Committee Meeting tomorrow in the adjoining room at 4:00 PM.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to do a quick report from the Citizens for Better Streets Committee. We had another productive meeting this last week. And one of their requests was in hopes that City Council members would participate in the education process of our citizens, that they would be a part of meeting with community groups and with our citizens to talk about the streets. And we've asked our attorney havens several times if we are allowed to do that. And we are on our own individual time. And so as August comes closer, I'll be passing out and talking to you with calendars of different events where we need to have people to attend in hopes that you can sign up. And also have an educational meeting on the 11th where we will help everybody understand the issue ourselves so that we know the answers, the questions and the right answers.
Okay, that's August the 11th.
August 11th is our next Citizens for Better Streets meeting.
And it will be where?
It will be at the Chamber of Commerce. And right now it's scheduled at 1:00 PM.
Mr. Meisner?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. I would just like to, I'm going to say congratulate this group on the very challenging committee meeting that we had. It was maybe last week, but I just thought that the entire council thrashed that whole problem over numerous ways and finally came up with a solution where we could all basically agree. And I also want to congratulate Ms. Smith for being able to maintain her stance at the same time.
Mr. Gill?
There will not be a planning commission meeting this month. There's nothing to consider. There will be no meeting and no workshop. Well, normally scheduled for the 19th, will not happen.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then let's move on to adoption of the agenda and consent agenda. Could you review the consent agenda, Mr. Bleece? Tony?
Yes. Items A and B relate to the same matter, just different dates. They would authorize a street closure between, on Field Avenue between High and South Street from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM on August 20th for soapbox derby trials. And then the finals are scheduled for September the 17th. We will make sure that no derby participant has a punctured tire because we'll make sure that street is very clean.
Thank you, thank you. My son has one, so.
Item number C relates to information sharing agreement with Block Hills Energy and the city to share lighting location information, GIS location, and billing information between the two parties. And item number D relates to recommendation to adopt the Uniform Election Code so that we can be a partner and coordinate our election with Fremont County, who would also conduct the election.
And then there's the list of bills, so. Are there any additions or corrections at this time? If none, then could I have a motion from council in a second? Ms. Schumacher?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda and the agenda as stated.
Second.
All second.
Mr. Weed, okay, second. Any discussion on the motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Council member Schumacher?
Aye.
Council member Weed?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, Tony, could we have the administrator's report, please?
Yeah, just three short items. First, I believe we have the final list. There'll be five customized questions as part of the citizen survey. They will be submitted tomorrow morning. And people should, who are going to be participants, the randomly selected 1,500 homes should be receiving their surveys about July the 18th. And then a second round of surveys would be sent to them a week later. So again, the tabulation will occur in late August, early September. And we should get preliminary results by mid-September, final results by the beginning of October. So we'll keep you apprised. Also, the employee survey, which is just as critical to get feedback from employees as to what is working well and what needs improvement in this organization that started today and that will take place over the next week. So we're looking forward to that data. And also, just as a footnote, I had a very productive meeting with Allison Helsley regarding Rooms to Grow and the discussion we had last week. My understanding after that discussion is she wants to be a full cooperative and collaborative partner with the city. And I think we should anticipate receiving something to that effect by the end of this week. And it'll be good to work with her in addressing this important community issue.
Any questions? Ms. Meisner?
Tony, those employee surveys?
Yes.
Those, those surveys, where are those going to be directed back to?
They are sent to a firm in California that, the surveys are confidential, anonymous. They'll be sent over the internet to a firm in California that will tabulate them and then give us the findings. No names will be disclosed, but they will be broken out by departments individually and also as a city organization. So it should be important and valuable information.
So it's done all electronically?
Yes.
What about those employees that really don't have a computer?
We've made, computers available to them. They can come to a couple of different sites and take the survey. It only takes about 10 or 15 minutes to fill out. And we've instructed people that either don't have access or aren't familiar with online computing that we will assist them in filling out the survey. So we're hoping for at least 90% response rate from our employees.
Any other questions, administrator? Okay, let's move on. Kathy, are there any citizens' requests to speak to council?
Received none.
Okay, thank you. Then, number seven is ordinance number 11, series 2006, an ordinance amending the zoning code, comprehensive sign plan. Clerk, could you read by title, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is a bill for ordinance number 11, series of 2016, as amended, and ordinance amending Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code to add subsection 17.30.075 Comprehensive Sign Plan.
This is the second reading. Could I have a motion from council in a second? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council make the motion to approve ordinance number 11, series of 2016, as amended, on second reading.
Mr. Meisner, second. Okay, are there any discussions on the motion? If not, let's call a roll, please.
Member Weed?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Schumacher?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Kathy. Public hearing for application special event liquor permit, Fremont Community Foundation for Brew Festival. Could I have the report from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of early this morning, it was, I was notified and we will not be conducting this public hearing, this event. They had to cancel due to the lack of number of brewers that would be able to come. So this item will be not considered this evening.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, public hearing application for special event liquor permit, Sons of Italy for the Italian festival. We are now going to open a public hearing. Could I have the report from the city clerk, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is John Carocci, who is representing the Sons of Italy, who's applied to council for this special event permit for September 9th and September 10th for their annual Italian festival. Notice of the public hearing was given by posting a location in the park. This is their fourth annual festival that the organization has conducted, which will entail many events throughout the two-day-long, with, two-day-long event, live entertainment and music. There will be a food court offering, Italian cuisine from local restaurants and various other vendors. Alcohol sales from this event will be conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to continue their efforts to promote the positive values of the Italian culture and heritage. As the event is free, individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband and underage participants will receive an X on both hands. I think that's just one hand now, right? Volunteers from the organization will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age and will assess with patrolling the perimeter of the event. A majority of the volunteers have attended the liquor training that's been offered by the city. And onsite inspection will be, of the premises, will be conducted that day of the events. And once all requirements are met, the permit will be issued. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fee has been submitted. The diagram meets filing requirements. The applicant has applied for permission to use the park and the street closure. The organization is also in good standing with the corporate, in corporate standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have of Mr. Carocci.
Were there any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Carocci, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, there is.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Probably around 20, 25.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Most of the ones that are serving alcohol have been through the training of the city. Some of them have been working in bars in Canyon City for several years. And I'm assuming they've either been trained or, not real sure. Kathy would know that.
Most of them have been either through the volunteer training or the state of Colorado training.
All the same ones, and I'm sure they, yeah, so.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I would like to hear more about your event, please.
Okay, this year it will again be on a Friday and Saturday night, September 9th and 10th. I'm not sure, Friday night, we do charge a $5 entry fee. And Saturday, it's free all day for everybody. It is open to the public. On Friday night, we have quite a few vendors that want to show up and have their, mainly the food vendors, because we have quite a few people that usually come on Friday night. And so we'll have obviously a lot of Italian food and entertainment. We do serve alcohol Friday evening and Saturday all day. The event starts at 5:00 on Friday with the band starting at somewhere around 8:00 and going till close. And then Saturday morning, we go from 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 in the morning till, is it 10:00 or so? 10:30 by the time we clean up and everything. And we, we have alcohol that we serve through the day, of course, Italian beer and wine. Have to have that. We have the Salida Circus. We have entertainment onstage. And offstage, we have entertainment. We have cooking demonstrations. We have all sorts of children's activities. And so we're pretty excited this year. We've had great response from our advertisement already, so. Other, it's our fourth year, as Kathy read to you. And each year seems to get a little stronger. We've been real successful with some of the new things we've added. Of course, we've had to add cannolis and some of the things that people tell us, where are the cannolis and where's the spaghetti? And so we have a lot more of that each year. So we're, we're real excited about the event. September 9th and 10th, Friday night from 5:00 till closing. Have a great band, Whistle with Jimmy that night, or Wrestle with Jimmy, sorry. And then Saturday, I haven't 100% confirmed, so I won't tell you what band that is, but they're a great group from, kind of familiar with. So we look forward to it and appreciate word of mouth that any of you and of course show up on the 9th and 10th.
You got me at the cannoli.
I know, I made out cannolis, too.
We make our own cannolis.
That pushed me right over.
We make our own.
Oh, no.
We sold hundreds and hundreds of them last year.
I know, I know.
Lot of fun. We have a lot of fun. It's a great event.
Great event for Macon Avenue.
Yeah, it is. It's great. Well, congratulations. Are there any other questions from council? Mr. Meisner?
It's not a question, but it's a comment, John. You seem to be one of the strongest organizations that's really taken advantage and utilized the Macon Plaza, and we appreciate that.
Our fourth year there. We, we haven't outgrown it because we have the availability of closing more streets. And so we've just kind of extended it to the east, and that seems to work out all right. We try to support it. It's downtown and it's, as long as we fit, we're going to continue to have it there.
We appreciate that.
They'll follow the cannolis. So, thank you. Any comments from the audience? Okay, we're going to close, close the public hearing. Could I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I move that we approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Sons of Italy on September 8th and 9th at Macon Plaza.
Mr. Meisner?
9th and 10th.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Meisner?
Aye.
Council member Gill?
Aye.
Council member Weed?
Aye.
Council member Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Congratulations. Okay, number 10, bid number 21-16, CM AQ paving project. Could we have a report from our city engineer, Mr. Lancaster?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This bid is for paving of what are existing gravel streets. It's for the CMAC program with the federal government. CMAC stands for congestion mitigation and air quality. So we primarily use those grant dollars to pave gravel streets to cut down on the dust. We previously bid this early this year, you may remember, as 2116. However, the low bidder could not meet the conditions for the DBE goals set by the state. Therefore, we had to rebid it. This go-around, we actually got three bids, which was really good. And the low bid was Tony Beltramo and Sons out of Pueblo. Because it's federal dollars, we can't have a local preference. Tony Beltramo's worked for us before and has done a really good job, so we see no reason not to award it to them. So we recommend that you award the job to Tony Beltramo and Sons in the amount of $327,858.48 with a 10% contingency for a grand total of $360,644.32. And of course, that would be contingent upon sealed approval because they still have to look through Beltramo's paperwork and give us a blessing before we can actually write them a contract, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mr. Meisner?
Dennis.
Dennis, Mr. Weed?
Yeah, Adam, I'm kind of curious here. The CMAC funds, obviously, there's kind of like a cap that we get every year?
Yeah, so what happened when we were declared non-compliant in the 1990s, we were awarded an ongoing grant. And the grant has been approximately $200,000 a year since then. Of course, we've had to continue to lobby. And there's a few other small communities, rural communities that CDOT considers rural that use money for this, that we get money automatically. The current formula is we get automatically a million dollars off the top that we share among those other rural communities. Then the rest goes basically to Denver for carbon monoxide. Now ozone's a big thing and those sorts of things. So we have to continually kind of ask and lobby for that. But it's been a pretty good deal and a pretty good run for a long time right now. They say with the new ozone standards that unless the feds increase the dollar amount, there's a good chance we could lose, lose it. We've so far successfully argued that we are now in compliant, but we need, we need to continue to receive the money to be compliant. One year, we actually used it to purchase one of our street sweepers. So us and those other communities have successfully argued that it's doing good things and it's achieving those goals. So we'll see. But they also let us, the good thing is they let us roll that money forward annually. So I mean, obviously, we have a project that's more than $200,000 this year. And so we contract, annually, we contract for whatever we're going to build that year. Sometimes we don't build something every year. So we have more money the next year to do a bigger project.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Meisner?
Two questions. You mentioned the $200,000 limit. Is this, the difference between that and this year, $160,000, is that bankrolled from previous years or?
Correct. We have about, almost $600,000 in the bank, so to speak, right now that we can use.
One more question. I'm curious as to, when the initial low bidder was disqualified, is there something in the bid process that doesn't allow you then to award that to the second lowest bidder?
It does. But we knew that the second lowest bidder was way too high. We felt the price was way too high. And so we didn't feel prudent to do that. After discussing it with CDOT, we all agreed that the best bet was be to rebid it.
But if you're doing a sealed bid, is that not unfair to the second round? It's not a sealed bid anymore.
That's right. Everyone is exposed to those numbers from there on out. We had that discussion with CDOT as well. Our current, our current city policy is we share bid numbers as soon as they're available. If we want to change that policy, the CDOT policy is they, they hold the numbers until the award.
Let me add to that. In each and every bid that we send out, we reserve the right to reject any and all bids, if, if there's a reason to do so. And in this case, there was.
Okay.
You know, I would be concerned.
If you were a contractor?
No, I would be concerned if there, if we saw some more relevance in the numbers. Just to give you some, a little further background on this, since it seems like you're concerned about it a little bit. The original bid, it was $100,000 apart, the two bidders were. And, and our estimate was in the middle. So they were $100,000 apart. On the rebid, those same contractors, those same two contractors, the, the low bid raised his by 50,000, and the high bid lowered his by 50, and they were $4,000 apart. The new guy came in and beat them both by around $40,000. So the numbers are all over the place. I mean, if, if someone came in, I could see a concern. If someone came in and they had the exact same numbers as the low bidder, for example, you know, that would be suspicious. But I think, I think the evidence is more currently that they're playing with the numbers more than probably should be. I mean, I mean, when you see a small project like this and the numbers are that far apart for two local contractors, you know, it doesn't look like there's any collusion or any of that sort of thing going on.
Ms. Smith?
I have two questions as well. What project are you anticipating using these funds for?
So this project is, we are paving Cherry Street. There's a short section of Cherry Street that's unpaved right off of 19th Street. It's one block. And then we are paving Phelps Avenue from Bar Avenue to Central Avenue. And we are paving a short portion of Four Mile Lane. Historically, when we first received this money, we used it right away on the streets that we were in violation for. Then City Council established a policy that where people were, where the neighborhood was willing to invest dollars in an improvement district, that's where we would invest the grant dollars. So we followed those improvement districts across town. And then more recently, we've ran out of those improvement districts. We've ran out of neighborhoods that either have the money or are willing to put up money. So then we went to the fallback based on the dust mitigation, and that's the highest traffic counts. So now we're back to whittling away on our gravel streets based on what the traffic volumes are.
One more question of curiosity. When it says that a business fails to meet the federal disadvantaged business enterprise requirements, what does that mean?
So a disadvantaged business enterprise is someone, typically, that's, that's a company that's owned or operated by a minority, for, for the most part. That's not the exact definition, but for the most part, it's, it's companies that are owned by a minority. So the federal government decided that they want so much of each project to go towards those types of businesses to help them out. So depending on the type of work that's involved in the contract and the, the dollar amount that's involved, they set a goal, what they call a goal, which is a percent of the dollar amount that they bid. In this project, it's 4%. So 4% of the total contract has to go towards two one of these DBEs. So that, they, the, the general contractor has to be a DBE or they have to hire a subcontractor, like a, a concrete contractor or traffic control company that's a DBE that meets that percentage of the contract. If they can't, again, that's why it's called a goal, they have to show what's called a good faith effort. So they have to show that they made an effort to find those kind of companies. And there's long lists of them available that the state produces that they have to go through. And then they have to prove that they tried to get those people on board and why or why not they didn't. That was the problem with the first contract. The first contractor picked a subcontractor he thought was a DBE. They weren't a DBE. And then when the state asked them to show them their good faith effort, they couldn't produce it because they didn't do it. And that was a big no-no.
Mr. Meisner, again.
One more quick question, Adam. What are they still doing on Phelps?
So Phelps.
I mean, I assume people over there today.
Yeah, we, we have a bit of a mess over there. What happened on Phelps, we, we like to go in before we pave streets or repair them to repair or replace the utilities. We put in a new water line on that street and we put in a new sewer line. What we think has happened is, was an unintended consequence of replacing the sewer line, much like we had up on Sixton Wood Lawn a year or so ago. The sewer district goes in and replaces their sewer line that's been leaking and taking on groundwater for 50 years or so or more. And they, they're sealing that up because they don't want to treat that groundwater. Then what happens is there's, that groundwater has no place to go. The groundwater is generated, we believe, by the irrigation because nobody had a problem with it all winter long when they did the work. All of a sudden, the ditches come on, the hayfields are getting irrigated, and the water was surfacing in the street. So we have installed a pump well. We're waiting on the pump for that. We're keeping it pumped down manually right now. We've installed a drain line for a portion of the roadway to try to get it dried up before the paving. And the sanitation district is continuing to do some potholing to try to pinpoint other point sources that may be happening. In the meantime, we're piping the irrigation ditches on both sides of the street. And our ever intention is to have it dried up before this construction starts, which should be into this month. That's what's going on.
Doesn't look good.
It's North Canyon. The soils are already saturated typically. And then you add the irrigation season on top of that, and yeah, it's, it's been a mess. And I applaud the people that live over there for the patience that they're giving us because they've, they've had to live with a gravel street for so long and they, they were ext- because they've had to live with a gravel street for so long, and they were ecstatic when they found out that we were going to pave. In fact, one of them has a contract to sell his house contingent upon the paving, so he's pretty nervous. But they've been very patient with us.
Okay, any questions? Further questions from council? Thank you, Adam. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, as for a motion from council, one second. Kathy?
I make a motion that we accept bid number 21-16, CMAQ paving project.
Second?
Second?
One second. Any discussions on the motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, number 11. Ordinance number 12, series 2016. This is the ordinance calling for the special election and referring a ballot question. I would need three to introduce, Ms. Schumacher, Mr. Weed, and Mr. Meisner. Would you read my title, please, clerk?
This is a bill for ordinance number 12, series of 2016, an ordinance calling a special election and referring to the eligible electors of the city. The question of whether the city sales and use tax rate should be increased by 1% with all the revenue therefrom to be used to fund street-related infrastructure improvements and repairs, fixing the ballot title and question, and setting forth other details relating thereto.
Could we have a report from the city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The ordinance itself will, as the title indicates, result in the calling of a special election to coincide with the federal and state general elections take place on November 8, 2016. The ordinance also gives the council such authority and instructions as it will need if the ballot issue that is referred to the public is approved by the voters. So, that's what the ordinance does. It also sets the title and presents the referred question. I'll go over the primary elements of the ballot issue, the ballot question. First, it begins with Tabor language. That may seem a bit odd to some, but it's mandatory under the Tabor Amendment to the Colorado Constitution. Second, it contains an estimate that the annual revenue to be generated by the rate increase for sales and use taxes would be $3,500,000, $3,500,000. That might be a bit high as an estimate, but if we were to underestimate, we would have to refund the difference. The question also calls, as I indicated, for a 1% increase in sales, in the sales and use tax rate. That would mean it would, the rate would increase from 2% to 3% for a 10-year period beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2026. The question also provides that the revenue to be generated by the tax would be exclusively usable only for street-related infrastructure improvements and repairs. It provides that prioritization with respect to which repairs and infrastructure improvements are done will be the city's payment management plan and the criteria contained therein. The question also calls for an independent audit of all revenue raised and expenditures made with respect to the tax increase, if approved by the voters, and provides that an honest audit report will be made available to the public for their review and consumption. The question also provides that the revenue not be used to pay city personnel or for purposes of purchasing road, street construction equipment and the like. And finally, the question, if approved, would be a voter-approved revenue change, which would mean that the revenue raised by the rate increase would not be subject to any Tabor limitations that otherwise might apply. So, that's the question and its essential parts. Again, a special thanks to the Citizens for Better Streets for having offered considerable input to the formation of the question, and members of council for doing the same. I'll respond to any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from council? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Havens, you said this, but it says special election, but then, you also made reference to the November election?
Special election for the city. Our general elections are every other year, and this isn't one of them, so that's why it's special for us.
Special for us. Got it.
Do you feel special? Okay.
I do now.
Well, okay.
This election is very special.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Are there any comments or remarks from council? Then, I'll need a motion and a second.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 12, series of 2016, on the first reading.
I'll second.
Mr. Gill? Any discussions on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yay.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Any comments or discussions, we're all gathered together here, that we'd like to...
Yeah, I would like to make a comment about the fact that with council's effort, Ms. Smith's effort, and the Streets for, Citizens for Better Streets, that whole group, I mean, we're much wiser in our second effort, but I think a key element was that citizen group that started and proactively generated this information.
I probably need to add, especially since Adam's here, he's been an integral part of this process as well, and the city and citizens working together to gather the information and the stats and everything that we need. And it's been great to have a really great working relationship together with that, as well as Tony. Also point out that Mayor Troutman still needs to sign a letter for fundraising purposes.
They have it for...
There's many people waiting for that.
Yes, I have it. I will be signing that yet, this evening or tomorrow or Thursday when we get together, so. This is pick on the mayor evening, I see, so.
And we appreciate everything you do, Mayor.
Well, thank you so much. Any other comments, questions?
You know, yeah, I guess I'm going to ask this, just because I'm curious, because apparently, the rest of the council was not on board with this. The final question that we've proposed for our survey, here, can I read?
Sure.
The question, as it was proposed, is do you support or oppose adoption of zoning and special review conditions to permit the cultivation but not sale of marijuana in commercial or industrial zones in the city? And I had responded to everybody that, personally, I think that the question, as it was phrased, is doomed to fail, because I think the result we can expect to see will probably mirror the result we saw with respect to the general question of retail marijuana, period, in the city, which went down by about a 60, 40, or something like that. And my comment was that, as the question's phrased, they have no idea why we're asking this question. And the whole point of getting, going through this exercise is to, at least in my mind, the way I saw it, was to get retail, or to get the cultivation of marijuana out of homes and residences and someplace else. And so, my suggestion had been to add a phrase to the start of the question, and it was simply, "In order to reduce cultivation of marijuana in residential homes and areas", then the rest of the question, "Do you support or oppose adoption of zoning and special review conditions to permit cultivation?", and so on. And I think that question more accurately reflects the real question that we're asking here. It's, I mean, this whole Allison Helsley Rooms to Grow thing, that, at least the premise behind it is moving grow operations from homes to other potentially safer and more secure locations. And like I said, the average person who reads that question has no idea, I mean, we're all privy to the background, and so, we know why we're asking the question, but anybody else who reads that question, again, this is just my opinion, but anybody else that reads that question is not going to understand the, why we're asking that question. I would expect the same result as we saw in the whole retail question in the first place.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Council, I think my one concern is that, I think we could clarify the question so it's more understandable, but we can't necessarily guarantee that by doing this facility that we're keeping grows out of residence. But what if we ordered it more like allowing a landlord cultivation of plants for citizens in a secure location type of question, instead of we're taking plants out of residence homes?
Say that again?
It's more of a landlord cultivation, that's...
No, no, that's not the case at all. The case is just anybody grow, I mean, anybody and everybody can grow in their own home. I mean, landlords would certainly benefit from this, and I mean...
Allison's operating a landlord.
Pardon?
She's doing a landlord tenant business. That's what we're talking about.
Hmm.
In her rooms to grow.
That's her business.
Well, that's her business. She's the landlord.
That's her philosophy.
Yeah, yeah. But the fundamental question is, do you want to expand the zones in which you permit the cultivation of marijuana? Right now, that's only restricted to single-family zones, and this question would ask whether people would be open to commercial or industrial zones.
I mean, right now, the only place you can grow marijuana is in your home, in the city limits of Canyon City, because it's not provided for in any zoning in any district at this point. Right, so, it has to be grown in your home. And the whole concept of rooms to grow was to get the grows out of your house and into a safe and secure place.
But we can't guarantee that that's what's going to happen.
Well, no, but it would, it would enhance the likelihood that it will happen. I mean, obviously, we can't guarantee that it's going to happen.
If you could change your wording, instead of in order just to, in an attempt...
In an attempt.
In an attempt to reduce.
Yeah.
See, it accepts the language, instead of in order, in an attempt to reduce.
Mr. Meisner?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it was, the idea was to give a little background to the question without getting real wordy.
Is it possible, within the structure of that survey, Tony, that question five could be broken down in A and B and asking the same question versus commercial zoning and industrial zoning?
Yes, we could.
Because I'm, I'm personally, as a council member, I would support some industrial zoning if the results came back that were, that the citizens were in support of that, but I would not support a commercial zone.
We can ask either or on that one.
Yeah, well, see, the interesting thing is that you keep here, I've heard this numerous times from the people here and other people in general, that, you know, the comment is, well, if you do it once, you got to do it for everybody, and that's nonsense. The only way this gets done is by special review, and it's a case-by-case process. And so, your commercial grow in a, or your grow operation in a commercial building on Main Street, we, as, we as council are the ones that are going to decide this, a commercial grow in a building on Main Street may not be what we want to see. But there are other commercially zoned areas in this city that are far less, I mean, I'm thinking like there's, I don't know, it's probably zone commercial. There's that gas station, or used to be a gas station up in Dawson Ranch where you turn off of whatever road that is, that for the most part is just a, or for years, it's just, you know, that may be a case of where it's like, yeah, sure, that'd be a great place.
But going back a couple of years, I remember you making remark that there's some terminology about the good of the neighborhood. Is that some legal terminology that applies to approving, like liquor applications and some of those special things, that for the good of the neighborhood doesn't necessarily apply to that specific neighborhood, but is actually citywide? That if you approve it in one area, that you then have difficulty in saying in another area that's of the same zoning, you would have difficulty in not approving it, based upon that good of the neighborhood concept? Is that correct?
No, I understand what you're saying, and the, well, John could clarify this, but I think that in that case...
On liquor, do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
On liquor, there's the needs of the neighborhood standard with respect to a new liquor licensed establishment. This city has defined the neighborhood as everything within the boundaries of the city. So, that's where that comes from, at least in the liquor context. One reminder, if you decide to allow this sort of grow operation, and you use special review as a means of going through a process determining whether to permit or not permit the use, you need to remember, this won't be a decision necessarily made on the merits or lack thereof of cultivating marijuana, but instead, would be based on the merits of the effect on the neighborhood, however you define it. Air, dust, smell, traffic congestion, just the typical land use impacts on neighbors and neighborhoods would be part of the special review process, as opposed to a wider scope view, which would take in the merits or lack thereof of cultivating marijuana, for whatever that thought is worth.
Mayor, I don't see any harm in doing two parts, commercial and industrial. I'd be curious in the results.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, because if somebody might have a problem with it in the commercial area, but not in an industrial area, or vice versa, at least, we're getting two bangs for the buck on this one question. I think that that's probably, you know, probably the way it needs to be going, in my opinion.
I think I captured the change in the rewording to "in an attempt", and then, breaking the question into two parts, one asking about commercial, the other industrial.
Asking about industrial.
So, if that meets your approval, this is what we'll submit tomorrow morning.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, and I'd like to change the word to "an attempt", because, you know, there's no guarantee that it's going to happen, so.
That is your interest.
Yeah.
I think that before I adjourn, we had a discussion, and I think, Tony and I will probably propose a committee to discuss marijuana. This seems to be something that consistently comes up. Briefly thinking, it would be council members, citizens at large, people that are professional growers, so that we can look face-to-face and discuss these issues. And that would be a committee that would have certain requirements, and we'll propose that and see what you think. Well, then, let's adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.